All right, it is 5:00 PM on September 8th. I call this meeting of the Clear Creek Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that its notice has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. And with that, we have no community input. And the next item is our consent agenda.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move to approve the recommendation of superintendent to approve the monthly human resource report.
Thank you, Ms. Cheka. And with that motion, any other discussion? Yes.
I just wanted to commend, I guess, HR. I saw where we have a replacement for our Clear Lake intermediate, you know, LDC. And Major Reams was such a proponent of the program that I just, it would, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that those are big shoes to fill. And I wish, you know, our new hire good luck, so.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. I absolutely agree. All right, and with that, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And no opposed. Thank you very much. All right, next item up is for an approval of our internal audit plan.
Okay, and go ahead and introduce, the Texas Education Agency recommends that districts with enrollment exceeding 5,000 students conduct periodic risk assessments across all operation areas. And in alignment with this guidance, our internal auditor, Ms. Easton, will present her proposed audit plan for the 25-26 school year. And her presentation will include an overview of the risk assessment process, the audit methodology, the recommended areas of focus, and a calendar outlining dates for completion. So thank you so much for the work into this, and we'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Easton.
Thank you, Dr. Engel. How do I switch it? Tonight, I'm presenting the 2025-26 audit plan for your approval. The Texas Education Code requires the internal auditor to present an annual audit plan to the board. In addition, professional standards from the Governmental Accounting Office and the Institute of Internal Auditors call for board approval. The plan provides a structured but flexible roadmap for the year and gives leadership the opportunity to request specific audits. The purpose of the plan is to provide independent analysis and recommendations, establish the scope of audits, and focus resources on the areas of greatest risk. This ensures we are protecting district assets and supporting efficient, compliant operations. The plan is developed through a risk-based process. We identify audible activities, apply risk factors such as likelihood and impact, and gather input through surveys from department heads. Results are scored and used to prioritize audits so we can focus on high-risk areas. We collected input from 56 budget managers. Each response was assigned a numerical value and weighted based on importance. By multiplying the value by weight, we get a risk score, which helps us identify and prioritize audits or areas that need audit attention. This heat map lets us quickly see which areas pose the greatest risk. The items in the top right are our highest priority, so our audits focus on where they could provide the most value. The audit calendar. This year's audit calendar includes 18 campus audits. Key departments include special services, transportation, technology, advanced academics, and child nutrition. Time is also reserved for one-off audits, booster club oversight, employee training, the fraud hotline, conflict of interest reviews, continuing education, and unforeseen issues. In conclusion, the 2025-26 audit plan aligns with CCISD's commitment to accountability, transparency, and stewardship of resources. It is risk-focused, flexible, and designed to add value across the district. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Easton. All right, I'll open it up. Any questions, comments? Go ahead.
Ms. Easton, I just wanted to say thank you for the work that you do. Thank you for helping us stay really on track, to be disciplined about just reviewing the work that's happening, being connected and open to what we're hearing from people who may be closer to certain projects or activities that offer insight that we otherwise wouldn't know as a board. And I think when we talk about a reputation that we've maintained, whether it's in finance, whether it's how we manage our facilities, it's, to me, I think, really important that this capability and the work that we do in audits just allows us to either provide reassurance that what we're doing is exactly what we should be doing, that we're following processes consistently across the district regardless of whether it's PTAs and boosters, or how we're, you know, holding funds within a front office, or what we're doing with different training that's required. But I just want to thank you for the work that you've done in providing this discipline for us, provides additional assurance to us as a board, because there is so much that goes on across the district that we wouldn't have any way to be this close to, and so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trustee Sanchez. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I'm gonna echo what Trustee Sanchez says. Being close with a lot of our booster clubs and things of that nature, I know that you just got done with your meetings and things of that nature across the district, and I hear nothing but great things in terms of, you know, putting policies and processes in place to kind of help tighten that up. So what we're doing on one side of the district, or what we're doing for, you know, cheerleader boosters at one school, we're doing the same thing at the next. So thank you for the work that you're doing. I can't believe it's been two years already. It seems like it's flown by pretty fast, but thank you for what you're doing.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Trustee Cunningham. Anyone else? Anything? And I'll echo both what they said, and I just wanted to share some of your words from the presentation or what we were provided. The presence of an internal audit functions strengthens the community's trust in our operations by providing objective assurance and accountability. And you've been here for a few years now, and you're definitely living up to that, and so hopefully the community sees it. You know, you're very thorough in everything that you've done and provided us, so we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, do we have a motion to approve the audit?
Mr. President, I move we approve the 2025-26 internal audit plan.
Thank you, Trustee Mackay. And any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And no opposed. All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Easton. All right, and next item up is a support services update.
So we've had an outstanding start to the school year, thanks in large part to the exceptional work of our facilities and operations teams. And the progress they've made over the past few years has been truly remarkable, setting a new standard for excellence across the district. This afternoon, they'll present a comprehensive update on support services, including child nutrition, facility services, maintenance and operations, safe and secure schools, transportation, and auxiliary staffing. Good. So Mr. Miller, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, will kick this off and start it, and then he has other people in these departments that will share an update for the trustees. Thank you.
Good evening. Well, I'm excited to do this tonight. I have the privilege of working together with a dedicated group of leaders who guide their individual departments. And those departments are staffed with selfless and hard-working professionals, so I think it's a great, a great thing to be highlighting them tonight. Their collective commitment ensures that our students and staff return to clean, safe, and comfortable learning environments, are greeted by caring bus drivers at their stops, enjoy nutritious meals, and arrive home safely at the end of the day. This evening, I've asked our support services leaders to share highlights of their team's activities and preparations that helped ensure a smooth and successful start to the school year. So we will start with Fred Walker, our child nutrition director. He'll be kind of a rotating... There you go. And they take great, great photos. Who is it in your department that takes those great?
Clary Ford.
Clara Ford?
Clary.
Clary Ford. So you'll, you see him in a lot of our memos. She does a great job with that, so.
She, the lady loves taking photos, and I just, and I said, "Just keep them coming," because they like them. We started the, let's see, we started the year off, had 250 of our employees greet all of the students on that first day with smiles. We started this year, we did a little something different than what we've done in years past about our menu. Typically, we run a two-week cycle menu with lots of heavy hitters on the days that rotate. This year, we decided we were gonna add a lot more things after doing a survey with parents, with, with kids. You know, we went out to schools, sat down with elementary kids, did taste testings, did, asked their opinion. We did a survey to parents where we had like nearly 4,000 parents send back responses of what they would like to see in their child nutrition department on, or on their kids, what they have available to them. We did the same thing with intermediate students. We got principals to send out a link for the kids to go on an online survey and give some opinions, what they want. So our menu this year looks really a lot different than what we have in the past. Didn't change pizza on Wednesday at the elementaries. Would never do that. But, but anyway, so, so we haven't made it through one cycle yet, but we're seeing good things. Like today, I went out to Land奥, and I was looking at it, and I'm like, I'd have a hard time deciding what I want. Do I want a chicken sandwich, or do I want spaghetti? And the kids were, it was basically 50/50 of what the kids were taking. We also got our catering department back up and running because we, facilities and CTE have a new culinary arts kitchen over at the LSC, and part of that meant we got a little renovation and had to move out for the summer, so that, that's back up and running and glad to be there. You know, the, also, in transportation, I'll probably talk about this later, about their, their new tap system, I call it tap system, for the badges when the kids get on the bus. You know, for years, or I think this is our fifth year, we've been using badges. And we went from kids entering their number to the badges where it was a barcode reader, to now the tap, where a student just taps it on, kind of like when we go through a door or when you pay at, at, you know, a convenience store, grocery store. And that has really helped out. But we, we were the guinea pig for the first day of school, and I hope this holds true. The first week of September, those numbers are totally different. I mean, we're looking at, you know, 4%, I believe it's, what did I put? 4.2% last week, high school, over the first week in September last year. Intermediates 2% above, elementary's .4, and overall, we're 2.2. So we feel that that's gonna continue. I think Paul's gonna talk a little bit about staffing and stuff, but that, that was another issue this year. We have, we're not fully staffed, so we're having to make some choices on what we do in certain instances. But overall, we're excited and ready to go, so.
Thank you, Fred. Next up is Alex Aragon with our Facility Services Department.
Good evening, everybody. I am happy that I will not be requesting any funding tonight. It's exciting to be here and to kind of brag on my team of three PMs. So everything you're gonna see tonight on what we've done during the summertime was basically just three highly qualified, very dedicated people in my staff. So to start with, our summer projects, we had some priority repairs and replacements. That finishes those schools for the bond 2023 of Bowerschlag, Falcon Pass, Gilmore, Goforth Robinson, and Weber Elementary. And the transition, or the transformation of those schools is amazing, based on what they look like to, what they look like now. Really, really happy of how that turned out. Then we also tackled some, we also tackled the Westbrook Intermediate School priority repairs, and that was combined also with critical infrastructure and AC replacements. So we did all that as one project, and that school also turned out amazing. We also tackled the East and West Ag priority repairs project. And then the central plant upgrades, again, Clear Creek High School, which was much needed to support their aging chillers. We're able to now come up with new chillers, and it has made a big difference in the school. And again, Westbrook, which was part of that original project. And then we tackled the Bayside Intermediate, the new driveway that now will complete the whole circle of the Ed Village campus. And then we did roof replacements at Clear Lake High School at the Athletic Building, which was one of the last roofs that we had to complete. Clear Lake City Elementary, Hyde Elementary, and McQuarter's Little Detached Gym. And then we tried, and then we moved away from shingle roof to nice metal, standing seat metal roofs at the TLC, which makes a really nice difference and looks really, really good. And then we did playgrounds at various schools, Bowerschlag Bay, Brookwood, Clear Lake City, Falcon Pass, Ferguson, Gilmore, Goforth Green, Hyde, Leake City Elementary, North Point, Robinson Ward, and Weber Elementary Schools. We did security campus upgrades at Clearbrook, Clear Lake High School, Clear Springs, Brookside, Clear Lake Intermediate, Leake City Intermediate, Seabrook, Space Center, Green, McQuarter, East Ag, and West Ag. And we did MDFID. So, and that was it for our busy summer of three people. Any questions?
If any of y'all have gone into the, the elementary schools at Westbrook Intermediate and seen the transformation of that with the new carpet and the new tile and the Wayne's coating down the hall and the new vinyl, it's, it really has made a difference in the way that those schools feel as you walk into those schools. So they did, they did a great job.
Alex, I was just gonna commend you and everybody in your department. If, if you ever get a chance to go visit and just see, it's, it's, it kind of reminds me of upstairs, you know, some of the departments, they're, they're having such a good time, but they're getting work done. And then just hearing, wrote some notes, I heard about the carpet and paint at Gilmore. I greatly appreciated, they're already hitting me up for furniture. But I told them, you know, it hasn't met that, what is it, 20-year cycle, I think? 25? So I told them, I said, "Calm, calm down, calm down. We're getting there." And then just passing by Creekside every, every day, going home, you know, during the summer, you see the guys out there on top of the roof, and I tell people, "It's hot," right? I work in the HVAC industry and sometime have to, you know, climb up there with my customers and, you know, 140-plus, easy, having to take breaks. So definitely, you know, very appreciative of the work that you guys do. And then also wanted to mention the playgrounds, taking those over and kind of bringing those in-house is such a benefit because it just brings, you know, that continuity across all schools. Nobody gets left out, and, and things of that nature. So like I said, just all the work, people see the finished product, and they don't see the work that goes into it. But when you get a chance to see it, you know, you have to call it out, that, you know, thank you.
Thank you. And I agree 100% with everything Trustee Cunningham said. I would hope that, hopefully soon, we can do some tours. You know, definitely with the Feather and Fork Bistro, not only for the food, but to see everything. You know, we, we kept hearing all the challenges along the way with the sewer lines and things like that, and so we always enjoy going over to Springs and, you know, experiencing their bistro. So hopefully, once it's all up and running, we can sub tour over there. And maybe some of the other elementary schools too, that, you know, we've kind of cycle around doing some of the tours here and there, and so some of these that have had some of these updates that we can all check out as well.
Feather, Feather and Fork opens end of the, end of the month, is that right? I said Feather and Fork is gonna open the end of the month?
I believe so.
Am I hearing that right?
Right.
Yep. Awaiting that invitation.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just, just one, I echo the thanks, Alex. The, just the volume of work that was done throughout the summer. I know people often ask from a board perspective if things slow down at the district because, you know, kids are gone and folks are taking time off, and I think you all do the exact opposite. And so thank you all for, for just the prep that goes into making sure you can just go right in as soon as the kids are walking out and teachers are walking out, and making sure that the campuses are ready when everybody returns. I did want to ask Dr. Engel, I think when I, when I think about just this as an example of all of the work that's gone on, and it's tied to commitments that we've made to the community about our learning spaces, about our facilities, I, I don't know what we've updated online, but I think this is the kind of thing we'd want to continue to communicate. I think for a while, we were doing the... to communicate. I think for a while we were doing the, the bonds, bonds to bricks. And I, I think making sure that that is up to date, even though we're not actively pursuing something right now, I think is really critical because that's the transparency and the trust that we continue to build every day in the work that we do. And I just think it's really important. You all are doing it every single day. And so just, so highlight that.
And, and we're, we work with Communications to make sure that it gets updated as we finish the summer projects.
That's awesome. Thank you. Thanks, Paul, as well. This, there's a lot that's gone on, but thanks to your team.
Well, it's, it's
This whole group is, is amazing to work with.
I was going to say, it's all the departments from Fred to Alex to Chris to Tammy. You know, it's all the departments. And it's not just when school's out. It's holidays, it's after storms, you know, things of that nature. I think everybody thinks, oh, it's just, you know, when the kids are gone. But no, it's whenever we can take advantage and, and have some time, I guess. You know, it, it reminded me, our last board meeting, we just recognized Springs and, and their Tommy Toons Award. But it wouldn't have happened had we not been able to hop on, you know, the, the speaker system and things of that nature. Once again, people don't realize that that's the, that's the work. We were able to get the soundboard, get that installed, get that up and, you know, rolling for their first, their first show. And that, that's how that all plays a role in getting it done. And I think that was done over Thanksgiving, if I remember correctly.
I think there was several steps with that. It was lighting and, and sound, I believe, that, that we had our crews working with Greg Goodman and his team and the campus staff to make sure that they could at least patch it, get it temporarily working, and then ultimately replace it. I think they brought in a temporary, a temporary system as well to make sure that it was actually operational for their, for their show.
Absolutely. So thank you.
Thanks, Trusty Cunningham and Sanchez. And, and again, Mr. Walker, you know, we didn't have any questions or anything, but lots of thanks. We appreciate it. And the badging system, I've, I've heard from, from parents, you know, how much they appreciate it and they like how smooth that's making it.
I did, I did have one question. We can capture how many meals were served. I'd be curious how many swipes.
That one we wouldn't be able to do.
Okay.
Because, I mean, that was one question Paul had asked when we first started this. Our system, we can pull them up by name. We can do the barcode on them. It's, it's not, it's just going to say who painted, it doesn't tell us how.
Gotcha. Okay. Fair enough. But that's still impressive. The, the amount of meals are still impressive.
We are pushing the high school kids to use it. The Intermediate Elementary is at Lincoln Bridge.
But it, you know, just the lessons learned, I saw, I think it was in our Friday packet, we saw one of the, the little students, you know, swiping her badge. And I'm, and I'm thinking about the, the lessons that kids learn because Fred made a good point. That's like taking your credit card and tapping, you know. That's, that's kind of how the world is. I, I think I pulled out a ten dollar bill the other day and the lady looked at me like I was crazy for having cash money, you know, instead of like my phone or, you know, credit card. But is what it is. So.
My son learned that lesson way too, way too well at Clear Springs. We, we have actually, Tammy and I have had conversations with Transfinder talking about how do we track? Can we tell whether or not the bus driver had to log them in manually or if they used their badge to be able to tell how many students are actually bringing their badge to ride the bus? But at this point, we don't have any, any way of doing that. So we'll, we'll continue to see if that's something we could, we could do.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next?
Next, we have Chris Pitts with our Maintenance Department.
So summer months for us is all about air conditioning and cleaning. We were able to get eighty, eighty-three of the eighty-nine chillers with annual inspection done. That cleans condenser tubes, changes oil filters, identifies troubled areas, bad sensors, things like that, get those repairs done before school starts. We were able to, with that extra, with that funding, we were also able to provide contractors to clean out our cooling towers at sixty-one to sixty-seven. The ones we didn't get to were the ones that Mr. Aragon replaced. So we didn't clean the, the old stuff. But that cleaning of those cooling towers helped us a great deal. Let us, let our technicians, rather than do that labor-intensive work all, all of June, actually work on troubled units, we work orders that we've had all season long. We were able to get all of our gas testing completed and backflow preventers inspected district-wide. So we're a hundred percent compliant day one, which is pretty standard, but new people in the department, it was still a little bit of a challenge to get it all, all completed. Towards the end of the, early August, I guess we were able to do a complete inspection of all playgrounds that were not new and do a fall safety area, the mulch inspections and get it mulch installed first two weeks of school, finish up the first two weeks of school as well at seventeen of the twenty-six campuses, twenty-seven Custodial crew was able to get gym floors at ten hundred, one gym floor, ten intermediates refinished this summer. We're doing it every other year rotation at those. And then we have a contractor that comes in and does the competition gym floors at all five high schools. Those were all completed really by the first of August. That way they were ready to go for volleyball practice. We were able to get, one of our chillers had a catastrophic failure last, really it was the end of last summer, early fall, able to get that rebuilt. It's, it's wrapping up. They've been working on it for several weeks and, and it's up and running now. They just have a few fine tuning things to complete. Mr. Aragon's team funded and provided Creekside Intermediate and Clearbrook High School Third Gym rooftop unit replacements. We helped facilitate just the timing and roping off parking lots for crane work and things like that. We were also able to, to complete, Ward Elementary had a condenser water pump failure that we had to rent one at the end of the school year, got that replaced. We were able to clean the heat exchanger there. Also at Wedgewood, we replaced a heat exchanger on the cooling tower system, replaced a gearbox there that failed back in May. Really pretty busy HVAC all, all summer long. But custodial team did great. We were able to do restorative carpet cleaning at every campus that didn't get new flooring, which helped a lot with all the, reduced the amount we had to do. But really, everything was, was completed well, well before teachers returned, minus a few detail areas and things. So since school started, we've gone back to our daily HVAC meetings. Every day at one o'clock, myself, Mr. Borowitz, one of our HVAC technicians, Michael Phelps, he's a master mechanical, mechanical specialist, and then Solomon Sandoval, our assistant director, we meet every day, talk about how the morning go, what failures do we have, what do we still have hanging out there, what contractor support do we need? If we're having troubles with, with things, we'll schedule, we'll run late, we'll start early, we'll run overnight if need be. Really, it's, it's been, been amazing. We did this last August, September as well. Just having that hands-on daily adjustments is, has made a difference. We've had a couple of hiccups, but this year, even the first week of school, we were actually looking into individual classrooms that were having problems, not just wings or entire buildings. So getting in that daily and, and really getting a feel for what's going on has kept us really on top of most everything. We, we have hiccups every day, but with, with three thousand classrooms, you're going to have a handful that are, that are not done, not up to operation. But we, so far it's been working well. We'll run that through at least the end of September, probably into mid-October, depending on the weather. Once things kind of cool off, it takes a little pressure off of us. So we were also able this summer, I forgot to mention, and it's helped, seems to be a whole lot, it's two intermediates and six elementaries, we were able to have every coil in the building cleaned. Rooftop units, fan coil units, heat pumps, it's made the efficiency. Schools like Wedgewood, Ward, Space Center, Creekside, just, not Creekside, Ferguson immensely more reliable. They're just not, they're not failing daily like we, we've seen in the years past. So that's something we will absolutely continue in the summer, having contractors come in and support, cleaning those out, really doing a thorough job, new filters, making sure screens and everything are cleaned out as well. So.
If we can go back to, I wanted to kind of highlight something that, so you, that, the photos you see there on the right, the before and after, tell them a little bit about the contractor coming in and treating on Wedgewood.
So the heat exchangers that, that are at Wedgewood, Ward, Ferguson, and Brookwood are really old technology that we just don't use anymore. And we actually, even though we're going to be replacing next summer, we had to replace the, the heat exchanger at Wedgewood. It just was not giving us the heat dissipation we needed due to the scale and buildup over the years. We tried treating, we tried acidizing, cleaning, just couldn't do it. So we ordered new heat exchangers, took, I think about nine weeks to come in, finally got it installed right at the first of the summer. Once they pulled it out, contractor and Mr. Phelps said, nothing to this. We can take this apart and clean it. So they tried and they said, yeah, this works pretty well. So we started having problems at Ward. This is, this may be a challenge and unbeknownst to me, until about halfway through the day, he said, by the way, we're cleaning the heat exchanger at Ward today. And using spare parts, spare gaskets from the one, the old one at, at Wedgewood, they were able to clean that, saved us about, I don't know, twenty-eight thousand dollars. And was done in a matter of a few hours rather than taking the whole thing out, taking two days. It's made a huge difference at Ward. The building is running really well. And then we've cleaned Ferguson or Brookwood as well now. So Ferguson's the only one left on the list, but it's performing well. We're not going to take it apart until we absolutely have to. So.
It was just, it's, it's a really great story of the, the commitment of our guys really diving in. I mean, we had, even had Mike Phelps and his team creating a, a fan to go on top of the cooling tower last year, just whatever it takes to make sure that we can keep, keep having school at that, at that campus. So they work really hard. So it's a great, it's a great story.
Okay. Any other questions on?
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. I'll open it up. If anybody wants, go ahead.
And Chris, I, I just, first of all, just wanted to welcome you. You know, when Ed Hall retired, every, you know, I think everybody was kind of like, oh, man, that's, you know, big shoes to fill. But you've just come in, everything's worked seamless, you know. The staff is great. I, I, and I just can't highlight enough how much you guys are doing with how little you guys are doing, especially compared to, let's say, six to eight years ago. You know, losing forty, fifty people in maintenance is, you know, detrimental. But yet you guys have figured out how to, how to keep it going and how to keep our facilities looking nice, running nice, et cetera. And, you know, with, without the hiccup of a abnormally warm year, I believe it was last year, that's, that's what I tell people. It was so extreme last year that, you know, that's not typical. But still, you guys, you know, use that to kind of put some processes in place and just, you know, figuring out as there's a shortage of, you know, workers in the HVAC and our plumbing industries and things of that nature, how to, how to work on things and, and, you know, tinker with them and keep them working until hopefully we can replace them eventually. But thank you, thank you, thank you. Please go back and tell everybody thank you.
Absolutely.
I think before the meeting, I told Dr. Engel that I'd like to stop by and, and see everybody, you know, at some point, just, just because I don't think you guys get recognized enough. I think it's just expected. But the, the job that you guys do is awesome. So just keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you.
And that, I was thinking of the same thing. You don't hear enough about, you know, how wonderful y'all are doing. And yeah, you know, as you mentioned, you have big shoes to fill and you're doing a great job and we appreciate it and working so well with Mr. Aragon's department. And yeah, you know, if something's not working right, we all hear about it. But y'all are behind the scenes and y'all just make it, you know, just, just work.
We try. We try.
You really do. You really do. And we appreciate it very much. Any other comments? Any other? No? All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. So next we have Cameron with our Safe and Secure Schools Department. We're having a little technical difficulty on the PowerPoint. Give us one second.
Thank you, Chris. In the summer, typically it's slower for my office. You know, no kids, no staff, less emergencies sometimes. Anyway, so we actually get a lot of our, you know, preparation for the school year done over the summer as well. One of the things that we always do is partner with the sheriff's office, our local agencies that, you know, provide us so much support for extra coverage at the start of the school year. So I'm sure you guys saw, you know, some of the Friendswood Police Officers, Harris County Sheriff, Lamarc, Leek City PD, Pasadena Seabrook, UTMB's Police Department, and Webster, they all had officers who helped us out at the beginning of the school year. Picked up, you know, jobs that are full days of work covering all of our elementary schools to make sure that we have officers, you know, for the entirety of the school day at every single one of our campuses for that first week of school. Our SROs do a fantastic job of making sure they're there every day, but having that extra help, you know, is always, is always good, right? We had a total of fourteen outside agency officers or deputies or constables that, that came in and supported us for the, for the start of the school year. So big thanks to Captain Brenda Alvarado, his admin assistant, Lieutenant Trossette, who's hanging out in the lobby. They did a fantastic job helping us get all that squared away. Kind of in that same vein, we do our best to support other departments as well throughout the start of the school year. We extend our hours instead of our seven to five, you know, normal office day that we have somebody manning phones, answering the radio, you know, responding to campus needs. We push that out to six-thirty or until bus is clear, if that is later. Tammy will talk about it in a little bit. They did a great job and got me home at a reasonable hour. I know not all of them got to do that, but like I said, they, they did a great job with that this year. We stayed, we stayed until that, that bus cleared, you know, each one of those days. We also had at least two of our SROs over in Transportation in their dispatch office to kind of help coordinate any response that was needed from them, whether it was a student that we were trying to locate who we were, you know, not sure if they got on the bus or walked home or whatever it may be. They were over there and, and really helped us, you know, coordinate that response when there was, you know, an issue that we had to, to kind of deal with. You know, like everybody's been saying, it was a really, really smooth start to the school year for our office as well. We really, we really did not have anything, anything huge, which is really, really cool to report. Yeah, knock on wood for the rest of the year. Over the summer, we did, you know, do some behavioral threat assessment training with Christina Ford and Counseling and Student Services. I've talked a little bit about Sentinel and what that's meant for the district and the new stuff the state has rolled out, you know, on that front. And we met with all of the Behavioral Threat Assessment Team Coordinators, the SSSP Team Coordinators, and walked them through that, that platform and that, you know, reporting requirement basically that the, the state has. Christina and her team were a huge help. Franklin and Holly, Dr. Stallings, all of y'all helped us with that, you know, plan and that rollout. And it, it so far has gone pretty smooth as well. We also did kind of a hurricane huddle a little while ago, met with all of, all of cabinet, departmental leaders in the district, anybody who's got a stake in something happening in, in a storm, right? L, LMC, Andrea Fries and, and her team. You know, we, we pulled everybody together who has responsibilities or things they need to think about, you know, when we decide, hey, you know, a school might need to, you know, go, go on close for a few days. So that was a, a very beneficial conversation. I think we got, we got a lot out of that one. And it was, it was good to have everybody in the room talking about their plans. So. The big thing for us as we approach the start of school year, other than everything else that goes on, is residency affidavits. Again, if there's, we do an in-person appointment process for families because we do see the bulk of those proofs of residency that my office helps manage in the July to August, September window. We started July twenty-first this year, which is two weeks earlier than we typically do. Typically, we start August first. We get rather busy with all those families coming in over at CSF. Tammy, we, we co-op Transportation's break room, half of it at least. So I'm very appreciative of that. We pushed it out two weeks this year and it has helped us out a ton. We run appointments. We have basically four appointment slot, four appointment slots every twenty minutes. We hire some substitutes to help out and process those families a little bit quicker. Sixty-eight appointments per day. per day over the course of the process, you know, about 2,600 appointment slots that we might see families in. Last year as of September 4th, we saw 1,413 approved affidavits. This year as of September 4th, we're at 1,528. So a little bit more than, than last year. That's including all of our early registration affidavits that start in May for pre-k, kinder. We, I rolled that into the, the calculation as well. We were sitting, last year overall for the 2425 school year, 2,232 affidavits. So we are almost there. We'll see what the final numbers shake out. We'll take those appointments or process those affidavits, excuse me, throughout the year as new students, you know, enroll into the district. But after, after Friday, we will be moving that back to email and I will get some office coverage back, which will help me out a ton. Captain and the school resource officers, the Safe Schools North Division, we started the school year fully staffed. It's been a little bit since that's happened. They did all kinds of training over the summer, alert training, work on the tasers that they're going to be issued here in a little bit. One of the big things that they do is cross-training with other GCSO divisions. So patrol, MHMR for the mental health side of things, bailiffs warrants, they, uh, they kind of go out and get a little bit of experience in all of those divisions as well. And then they get to bring that back to, to our district and kind of help us with whatever we need, you know, when that stuff happens. We welcome 48 crossing guards and team leads back to work on August 7. We had their, their big back-to-school training, refresher, you know, kumbaya kind of deal. It was very fun. They all got a, they all had a good, a good time. We had Chick-fil-A for lunch, so it's always a good day. The team leads and my security supervisor, Paige Wash, they have been fantastic in covering all the vacancies that we do have. We're working on getting those filled. I got two emails today from Human Resources, Samantha Avila, that she's got two more for me, so exciting. But I think Paul will talk a little bit about vacancies here in a minute. So again, other than that, it was a, it was a good start to the school year. We had very, very few issues and everything has been okay so far.
All right. Thanks, Cameron. Appreciate it. And we'll open up.
And Cameron, before we get too far away from the beginning of the year, and you had it highlighted on the first slide, but if you could thank our law enforcement partners, specifically, I know just League City, PD, during transition day, it's funny because you'll hear from parents that are like, hey, our kids are going to school, but I don't think everybody else got the memo that, you know, let's slow down in these school zones and then just, you know, reaching out because you have some contacts. And then, you know, hearing the, the next day or a couple of days later, you know, hey, I, I saw an officer, you know, on the west side, Campbell or what have you. And, you know, every, everything's copacetic. So I'm thinking of LCPD, but KEMA as well. Trustee Sanchez and myself had an opportunity to stop by at the beginning of school. And we know they do, I think, Lake, Lakeside or Lakeway, that Carl Dunn.
Lakeview.
Lakeview. I know that they, they do as well. So just, you know, if, if, if you're thinking about it or the next time you're on the phone with them, if you could just extend that thanks for us, because that is the most precious thing that we have and that's our kids.
For sure.
And they're, they're out there, you know, making sure that they're safe as well. So yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Trustee Kenny Ham. All right. Anyone else? All right. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Cameron. Bring Tammy Pickett up, our Director of Transportation.
Good evening.
It's just the right era.
Okay, thank you.
Go forward.
So this summer, we had a lot of implementation. We have a lot of stuff going on. Of course, we had a new routing system, but it just wasn't our routing system. We had to make sure that our Wayfinder, that the tablets that are in our buses was correct. Because you're not just looking at a route on a piece of paper, you're looking at it on a GPS system. So some of the points in that was a little bit different than on our routing, what your routing is normally as. We had to make sure that we were precise in that. So the, the routing team worked extremely hard over the summer just to make sure that all of the routes were correct before the start of the school actually began. Our fleet readiness, we needed, we had a lot of preventive maintenance that actually happened. A lot of our mechanics worked really hard to make sure that everything was up and running before the start of the school year. The, the, of course, the transportation enhancements. We not only had our routing, we also had our Stop Finder, our View Finder, our Trip Finder. We had almost all the finders out there. And then, of course, they added another Smart Find that was not even part of the Finder, but you know, that was another one. But we had to train a lot of the campuses on how to use that software for all of the filled trips. So several of our team went out and we trained, we had classes during the summer. I met with the administration on July 16th and we actually did a training session with all of our administration during that timeframe regarding all of our new finders that we had. And the Stop Finder, we are slowly rolling that out as well. We have sent out all, that is the parent app. And we have sent out emails to all of the parents that ride our buses regarding that. We'll have to do another push because we don't have, we have maybe 8% that has actually responded to it. We're going to have to do another push regarding that. And because it has been, you know, almost several weeks and we don't want to push too much because we don't want it to overload them, but we are, we are going to push a little bit more on that. And then Meet the Teacher, we had all of our route supervisors go out and had Meet the Teacher tonight to all the campuses. We wanted to support the campus. We wanted to build that relationship up, not just with the campuses, but with also the parents and stuff. And to let them see us if they have any questions, especially regarding all of the changes and stuff that we actually have this year. We know that with the support of the campuses and with the parents, whenever they have concerns, they're more likely to bring it up to us and we can be able to address it in a professional way. And then putting things first. So we did actually do a pilot over the summer with McWhorter and it went really well considering, you know, a pilot. If anybody's ever done a pilot, you always have little bumps and stuff. But that's, you know, that's part of transportation, having a little bumps in the road. But it went really well. Our face, our first phased rollout, we actually did it on August 25th. That was with 11 campuses. And that actually went pretty well as, I mean, I, I think it went really smooth. Of course, we have a lot of, you know, we have a, not a lot, but we have several issues and stuff. But it, there's so many moving parts, hence transportation. But there's so many moving parts that you have to make sure that where is it at? Where is it dropping at? Is it the badge? Is it the software? You know, there's so many factors. And so we're having to go through and work through all that. But our next phase is going to be this Monday. And that will be with another 11 campuses. We will be fully implemented by Thanksgiving and it might be a sooner start than that, but I never want to put that out there. I want to make sure that we're, we do a slow roll and make sure everything is smooth and running the way it needs to be. On our buses, our air conditioning, because I think some of you know that we've had some issues on our air conditioning buses and stuff. And, and with the support of the contingency fund and the mechanics working non-stop this summer to make sure everything was up and running, we were 100% on our fleet. So the drivers were able to, you know, focus on their kids, focus on their routes, focus on all of the new implementations and stuff that they actually had this year. But it went really well considering. And then all clear timing. So as you could see, we actually have, this year was in green on the data information. We actually did end most of the days, almost all of them. Of course, you always have, you know, kids that are, our parents that are not there, that we have to go back to the campuses. There's so many different factors that will come into play. But this year was really good compared to the rest of the year. So, questions?
All right.
I just want to say thank you. And then I love all your references, bumping the road, moving parts, slow roll. You love what you do and you're passionate. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Tell your team thank you as well.
Yes. Couldn't do it without our team, you know. And I will tell you, I just want to say this. With the support and the collaboration with this district, and there's, there's more people than just people in this room, but with IT and HR, I mean, there's so many people that are supportive and we would not be as smooth if we didn't, we didn't have that support. So I do want to thank them.
And I just want to echo what Trustee Lilly said. Thank you. Tell your team thank you. There are so many of our families that rely on transportation and that is such a major part of them getting to school and being able to learn. Thursday or Friday, in front of Seabrook Intermediate, a bus had broke down right when I pulled in the parking lot. Within two minutes, by the time I picked up my child and pulled out, Kyle was already there. The front of the bus was open. He had his head in there, you know, fixing it. I mean, it was just, it was incredible to see how, how fast we're really able to, to take care of those problems and get the buses back on the road.
That's great.
So thank you to, to all of your team.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Go ahead.
And Tammy, first of all, welcome as well. I, I know, I think this is your second time presenting, but I don't know if I said that when you presented the first time. Once again, it's, it's kind of like with Chris's department. You've just come in and everything is, is just been a smooth transition. No, no hiccups at least that we have heard about. So I think we're all thankful for that. But some, some of the things that you highlighted, maintenance, making sure 100%, you know, of the buses were ready to rock and roll. I'll just mention as you, you know, drive around, come home, leave early in the morning, and a couple weeks before school, you're seeing the buses already working their routes and things of that nature. The, the preparation that goes into making sure that it's a smooth, you know, first couple of days of school. But those are the things that you see. Could you also just talk about the summer program where some of the drivers were able to, you know, shuttle around, you know, local community partners and, and kind of keep them working, so to speak, during the summer so we don't lose them? Could you just highlight that?
We did actually have a, we did shuttling for League City. And we had UTMB that we actually shuttled for as well. I believe that we just received the contract back. I don't know if I'm supposed to say that. Okay, good. We just received the contract back from the CCIS moves you from the community service. And so we're excited about that as well.
That's, that's awesome.
Did you have any update on the?
Oh, it's with the crossings, the active living. We will be providing their transportation needs during the day while students are.
Yes. Or at, and the weekend.
And the weekends. They have a social calendar.
And the summer.
Yes.
And, and, you know, completely on point with, you know, everybody that you don't see, you know, like Mr. Pitts Department and Mr. Aragon's Department. There are so many people that are so passionate about, you know, their job and making sure the students get to school safely. They have cold buses and cold schools and, you know, so many people behind the scenes that are just working to make it happen and to make everything run smooth. And so thanks for stepping in. You've done a great job as well. And thank you, your team.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to say that a lot of people don't realize, but your crossing guards, your school bus drivers, those are some of the first interaction that our students have, you know, when they start their day. And so they really do. And if you ever get a chance to see, you know, kids either getting on the bus and those bus drivers that are high-fiving or welcoming them, that means a lot. A lot of people don't get a chance to see that or the crossing guards when we went over to Armin Bayou. And, you know, the crossing guard is sitting there, you know, greeting every family, every child that walks up. Those are things that people don't realize, but for that child, that just sets the tone for their day. And so, you know, once again, thank you. Child nutrition, another one, when the kids come into school and go eat breakfast, you know, how they're greeted in line and how they're treated. That just goes a long way to, you know, making sure that they have a positive day. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. All right. So I'll, I'm going to go over a little bit of the, the current staffing. We, we're continuing to have challenges in certain areas, including our skilled trades and our maintenance department, our kitchen, our kitchen staff and child nutrition and crossing guards and our Safe and Secure Schools Department. As you can see, we've, we've maintained about 10 vacancies in our maintenance skilled trades, 30, around 30 in our kitchen staff and about 10, it has fluctuated a little bit for our crossing guards. To, to address the shortages, we've worked with HR and finance. We had a committee get together, really started back when, in February of '24, when we were really, really struggling in, in several departments, including our, our transportation department. Came up with various ways of improving our staff, attracting staff and retaining staff, including pay rate increases. We did signing bonuses, I think some of the extra hours that, that really resulted in the CCIS moves you because we're really looking into what is it that causes us to lose, lose staff. And one of the things that has come out of that is you can see that the efforts in our transportation department has really shown. We had, back in February of '24, we had 55 vacancies and we're currently at 17 or is it 18? Sorry. 18 vacancies. That, that really makes a huge difference in, in our entire operation to be able to have our administrative staff and our director actually doing the work that they need to be doing at the, at the, the transportation center rather than being out on buses. Mechanics, we had mechanics driving buses and it really was every, it was an everyday thing for our transportation team. And we know that if we were able to, to really tighten up those vacancies in the other departments, it'll have the same effect. So we'll, there's more work to be done on that. We're continuing to work on that. I think with our crossing guards, we've, we've got two, as Cameron mentioned, we got two more today. But I think Elaine and her team are going to get a communication out. Last time we had a high number of vacancies, we sent stuff out based on where those vacancies are to parents and grandparents. And, and hopefully we'll get some, some movement on that as well to really improve that. I did want to have a, do a special thanks to Samantha Avila and the HR department. She works tirelessly to make sure that we have constant flow of applicants to, to interview. And that's, that's really been a significant help to make sure that we've been able to reduce those numbers. And I, I can tell you, she's always running around about bus drivers and, uh, bus drivers in training and academy trainees and all of those things, whether it's hosting those, those staff. Job fairs. Job fairs, sorry. I missed your blank there. Regularly doing the job fairs and we really have a good response to those. To even contacting and communicating with our directors and their staff regularly to make sure that we're monitoring anybody that has applied for a job in any of those trades. So her work is invaluable to our success. So wanted to thank her for that. And with that, that's our presentation for Support Services. All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Open it up. Anything else, anyone else?
Yeah. Thank you for the, the presentations today. I, I think it highlights the complexity of running an organization this size, but that it's a true team effort. If the kids don't make it to school, we don't get paid. If they don't get fed, they don't get, they don't learn. So every, it, it really highlights what a team effort this is. So when we graduate our seniors, it's everybody that's, that's had a hand in that. So make sure you, when you go back to your departments, that you, you convey our appreciation for the part that you play in, in getting all of those kids, you know, to that, that ultimate end goal. So thank you.
Go ahead.
I echo Mr. McKay's comments. I was thinking, Paul, you, at the beginning, you mentioned a team that is selfless and hardworking. And I think as I saw the slides and listened to the comments, I think about a team that's proactive and proud. proactive and proud, committed and relentless, responsive and resourceful. And I think when we consider just the significance of having an A-team, definitely we think about how important that is when we consider aging facilities, we consider changing demands from our students and campuses and our families. We think about from trades to transportation to making meals, to maintenance and mechanics and operations and keeping students and staff safe. What you all touched on today is really critical to protecting the heart of the district and is really a big part of our reputation building and our trust. And so when we, when we come forward and we talk to the community about a world-class education, they don't expect to see things broken and falling apart. They don't expect to see students and staff that don't feel safe or if they're not proud to be there. They don't expect to be extra hot. None of us do, right? We, we appreciate air conditioning probably more than most around the country, but all of it is, all of these things are so critical to ensuring learning is happening. And so even for our students that come from different backgrounds, when they show up at our campuses, we don't care where they come from. We, we're here to serve them and we're proud of the staff that we have and we're proud of the reputation and I think we're building that every single day. And so thanks to you, to the team, definitely everybody is so proud of, of what they do. We're proud of what you do. We're especially proud when we don't get lots of emails from people saying that we should be questioning why we're so proud. But honestly, thank you for that. There's a level of discipline and focus and attention that thinks about things and, and that you all do things that I'm thankful for because I don't think about things that way, but absolutely appreciate the work that's been done. And Dr. Engel was mentioning even just before we started, just how far we've come, just building on things that we've learned over the years and just really want to echo Dr. Engel's leadership for making sure that we're supportive of this at the district level and then just you and your team. Thank you to everybody.
And we want to also thank Mr. Miller's leadership. There's nothing that we do that he hasn't done. The hours and the commitment that we spend doing what we do, he's done, he's with us 100% of the time and he has our back. So it's really important for us to have a leader like that to, to support us so we can do our things and support our people.
Well said. Thank you.
It's Alex.
Building, you know, that first day just, was just priceless. Once, once again, absolutely thank you.
Yeah. They've said it best. I don't think there's really anything else to say, so thank you and for everybody in your department for caring and taking care of the students in the district so well. And with that, is there anything else you'd like to add? No? Okay. And at 6:08, meetings adjourn. Thank you.